Okay, so talking about Underground Beer Lab?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you guys kind of give a quick overview of intended program use, what you're looking to do. Do that quickly, then we'll talk about parking signage, any of those comments and kind of path forward.
Sure. Sure, I'm Kevin Taylor, one of the partners at Underground Beer Lab, Jeff.
Yeah.
Partner.
Yeah.
Architect. Yeah, so we opened in 2021 with some, you know, pretty good growth every year, you know, basically hundred percent year-over-year for the last couple of years. And what we're trying to do at this current spot is take over a space that's been vacant behind us, a traditional two thousand square feet to expand mostly in fact. So we have a brew house that currently is a three-barrel brew house, we're going to expand it to a ten-barrel brew house, which will about triple our capacity, most of our beer goes in cans. So we do have onsite tasting, we want to expand that a little bit, we want to put the outdoor space, which is on the site plan, and then obviously increase distribution mostly in central New York area. That's kind of in a nutshell.
Okay.
And I think just as an overview, we're trying to do the interior renovations to make space for new equipment, number one. And it grew slightly into a small addition, as you can see in the gray area. And that's compared to the whole building, and then the tasting area was added to function, and that's pretty where we are.
And the current tasting area is just going to shift in its position in the space, should stay relatively close to the same size.
Okay.
Alright.
So the issues that this board has been kind of looking at on this site, parking is a big one. It's a, we got a couple of things that we're going to have to address to move forward here through this. And part of it, you know, we'll talk about this as a trip to the ZBA. Right now, you are showing seventeen spots on the south side of that.
Yeah.
Those are not legal spot, parking spaces, and they can't be counted towards your building currently. There is no parking agreement with the adjacent property, as far as we're aware.
That was in the appendix A, there was a letter.
But the letter, the letter is not a legal parking agreement. So you need to work with ALIVA to get a legal agreement for those parking spots to count. To do that, beyond that, the parking requirement that we calculated for the building based on, are you German construction, is it?
Yes.
Okay, so based on the overall size of the building, your warehouse space, the Underground Beer Lab space, there's a requirement of forty parking spaces for the site. If we show the seventeen that currently exist, plus the seventeen that you don't technically have the ability to count, that would only be thirty-four. So you would need to go to ZBA for variance on six in there, which I think if you're showing, you know, the project, the use, all that stuff, six, I don't think is going to be an issue with ZBA. But you're going to have to go there, so there's at least a trip to the, to the ZBA to talk about parking. The other one is signage. The monument sign that's out front, that's compliant as of right now. The sign on the face of the building facing the parking lot on the south side needs to go to ZBA for variance because that's not an allowed location, it needs to be facing the street. If it was facing the street, actually, it technically also needs to be part of a multi-tenant sign package, because it's all on the same building.
Yeah, is there another sign already for?
Sherman's?
No.
So there's no other signage on the building?
We're the only building in the whole complex that doesn't have a sign on the building. Every other building has a multiple signs.
At this point, it wouldn't be multi-tenant.
Right, because you can only have one sign on the building. So if at some point you wanted a sign on the building for another tenant, it would have to be like a multi-tenant sign package, we call it, where the, we approve the signs and they all have to kind of look alike. But if there's just one sign, that's fine, but it is supposed to face the street where you have an access.
For clarification, is this the building sign to identify the address? And will, will we propose, just to clarify, just the building identification, not the tenant identification?
Talking about the attached.
The, the one on the building.
The one on the building.
Well, I'm trying to clarify what your code requires, and we thought that what you're looking for is, number one, two signs are permissible and in the different conditions. One is for the building to identify its address.
To your, to your street address.
Number on the building, so that's one of the options, we showed one in the.
Free state, that would be a free state.
And that would comply with the requirement for a building location. I think we'd like to preface this.
Is there a package that someone can put up on the screen?
No, that's it.
Right, so that's the monument sign?
That's right.
That is permissible?
Yes.
In there.
We knew that, but what we'd like to clarify at this time, I think, is what a number on the building deal with, like the neighboring building, which has seven thousand.
Right.
Be adequate to identify the building by itself, knowing that the second sign on the tenant is the UPL sign.
Yeah.
So we keep writing something.
So we can't, we can't hear this conversation.
Yeah.
The air just turned on, Jamie.
So I'll, so Jamie, he's asking right now, so the image that you see, the monument sign with the building address on it, if they were to take that building address and put it on the building, which is, I think that's fine, does that count toward building, well, that wouldn't be part of the tenant signage.
Two signs on the building, one for address and one for the tenant.
That's how when I read it, and I understand your comment about multi-tenant, this part, there's no other signs on the building. We'd like to, I think, put the number on the building as opposed to maybe increase possible sign.
Okay, so you're saying.
I don't think the street address impacts tenant signage.
Well, and that's my point, is to clarify that issue, is to apply that right code.
So we'll, we're getting, unless Jamie, unless you know off the top of your head, building address, that doesn't impact tenant signage, square footage?
The monument sign is, is a separate matter.
If, if they were to take the seven thousand, if they were to take the street address and put it on the building, so the building itself would have a streeted, a street address, it would just put seven thousand on the building, so the building is identified.
As the neighboring building is. And, and that's the address. Beyond that, regarding the tenant sign, I understand fully the reason for a whole building package to take multiple tenants into issue, both in terms of design consistency, size, and total square footage.
Right.
And we are within that for the independent UPL sign.
Right, I think at this, at this point, UPL is the only tenant sign. So there's, there's no need for a multi-tenant sign package right now.
I understand.
On that one, it would only be the UPL sign package.
And if they went to another sign for any reason, then you should look at the whole sign.
Correct, and you would come back and you would talk about a whole tenant sign package.
Fully understand the purpose of that, thank you.
So now that the air kicked off.
I'm not quite sure I'm following this conversation, sorry, because, because who's ever far away from it, I think I'm not hearing.
But let me summarize for you, Jamie.
Yep.
So the monument sign that you see on the screen right now, that's being proposed, they would like to potentially take the seven thousand, just the building identification number, and post it on the building instead of a monument sign. The question being posed is, does that seven thousand count towards the building signage?
Here's what it says in the code about the address, or following signs are allowed in any district without a permit or site plan review. One prominently displayed building address sign that is visible to pedestrian and automobile traffic, not less than four inches in height and with a one-half inch stroke or as required by the New York State Fire Code.
So apply with that, and you're fine on that one.
Right, we, in my, we've already stated that line in your code in our submission last.
Right, so if you were to take the seven thousand off of that and place it on the building, that doesn't impact?
Right.
UPL signage.
And I would address that issue of the code.
Yes.
The building identification.
Yeah.
I think that's the best answer here.
And that, and that's perfectly fine.
And then, I guess the question is, is there more signage?
Then there is a tenant sign above, on the, the south side of the building, which is internal facing. And that also is in this package, I think I, I thought I saw it's.
Yes, it is, yeah. It's in the previous package?
So because it's a multi-tenant building, it needs to be a multi-tenant sign package, even if only one sign's going up, right? So the, the requirements of the sign just need, and the style and so forth, needs to be.
Yeah, so I guess maybe, at this point, since you're the only tenant in a multi-tenant sign package, you're establishing the baseline for what future.
Yes, and it's a case like this, as you may know, when the building decide, it's, first of all, it's the building's responsibility to decide. This is one of the problems we've always had, it's the tenant's side, it isn't the owner's side. Yes, a building package with multi-tenant signs is, is basically coordinated in terms of graphics and every other. That's the purpose of a multi-tenant signs package, and I've advocated for that myself for years in our own profession of architecture. The.
Correct.
The issue here is that we have one, one additional sign, not the building, one tenant sign. And yes, it's under the code requirement today in, in terms of compliance, location, depth, and area. And if the building owner.
Just want to correct you, it's not in compliance for location.
It, if you say it has to face the street.
Right.
It's on the building, if the building enters to this tenant, and therefore it would be like a tenant door off of the main street. So the address gets you to the building, parking lot puts you in front of the sign.
But the building, or that signage needs to face the street right now, it faces into the parking lot.
I didn't read that that way, I did not read that that way in your code.
That's the way, that's, that is the.
Has to, has to face the street, I'll read it.
Wouldn't a parking lot be considered the street if there are multi, multi-tenants?
One attached sign for, one attached sign for the street facade to which the lot has an access drive and or windows on it.
Entrances. There was an original.
So basically, it has to be on the street beside to which the lot has an access drive.
And, and I, I should say, ZBA would regular.
Doesn't include the access drive, the street that has the access drive access on it. So if you had a, a corner, and the access drive came off this side, but there was a street on this side with no access drive, this is not an applicable side for the signage, only the side that has the access to the site. So in this case, your access is coming off the east side.
Yeah.
Right, so that is the front of the building, that's where the signage needs to be.
Well, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, we certainly understand the street presence. The issue here is the tenant door in a multi-tenant building is not at the front of the building. And so we put the tenant sign on the evidence.
Understood, I don't think.
There's also an access road in between the two buildings coming from Fly Road, there's two access points, I think all these buildings have to be.
Right.
It's not a public road though, right?
What's that?
It's not a public road.
Yes, it is.
The town owns that road?
Pardon me?
The town owns it?
Um, I have a, a drawing here. And you have Airways Park Drive, and then this is an access road to get to these two buildings and to the back of this.
Right, but then an access drive for the property, the town doesn't own it.
Yeah, that's not a town road.
Okay.
Can I, can I just clarify? Can I just ask you this, right, I mean, I, I don't, I think I understand what you're getting, you know, I'm not architect, but engineer, so I know some of this stuff. If we put the sign out here, I mean, just logically, but that's going to confuse our customers.
I just want to, when we don't oppose having the sign above your entrance, it's going to require you to go to ZBA to get the approval.
Yes. That's what I, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
That's how you, that's how you get it.
Right, if you wanted to put it above your door right now, it's not.
New Mexico history?
So it just needs, it would have to be on that side of the building, so you have to go to ZBA right now for parking. You're going to have to go to that.
One for each of them?
Make it one package.
One for each of them?
Yes, please.
Okay, alright, that's fine, I just started.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, is we don't, I don't think, we understand that having the sign above your door helps with wayfinding and getting people there.
Yeah.
It's just where you have it right now is not, or where you're proposing it is not compliant.
And that's not something that could be changed, is it?
No, it's only more of a.
No. Right.
I mean, just the way that street's configured, it makes logically no sense to put the sign in the front, right?
The kind of door doesn't have the building to vary the code.
Okay. And, and I don't think it'll be a problem either, I'm making you aware that we can't, our bar, our board can't approve that. So that is.
So.
Yep.
The one other issue with parking, and I think Eric talked about this, is.
Eric, by the way.
Doctor's name again, quick?
Is, if you do.
Doctor.
For those online, if you wouldn't mind muting unless you're actively speaking, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
So if you're doing a shared parking agreement, we need to make sure we're not creating a non-conforming parking arrangement for a ALIVA slot. So we need some sort of count from him, like of what the square footage of different uses of his building are, so we can figure out what his parking count needs to be, just to make sure we're not creating a non-conforming situation there by allowing him to share parking.
Yeah, that's a good point, and it's a new point to us that we needed to go to another addition. I mean, as a tenant, we've had to go to our landlord to find out their agreement with you, and verify that. Now you're asking us as a tenant or landlord to check with another building's permit requirements for the town on our back, I think I'll say it that way, on our back is part of our permit request. That's difficult for me to understand, as an architect stepping through the process. Why hasn't the town gone to ALIVA itself and asked for their parking map to verify your status and their status independent of our client for permit?
Well, at this point, we would have no need to go to ALIVA to talk about their parking. I think it's because you're making a modification of the site plan that these issues are being raised. You're non-compliant in terms of parking, so what you're doing is you're, you're making an ask of ALIVA to take and share some of that parking, so in order to do that, ALIVA needs to prove that they have sufficient.
And to your point, I heard you say today, illegal parking, that is close to the letter we had from McRae.
Yep.
You know, our building is, and his relationship, he's clearly asked for more legal.
Right, because if he sells his property in the next over, doesn't want to share parking, and there's not a legal agreement, then, you know, suddenly you lose that.
Correct. That letter's.
So, so just so you folks know, there are situations in the town where this due diligence has not been undertaken, and people box people out, right, they put fences up, they put walls, so it's to your best interest to try to.
Very good point, very good point.
To try to minimize that.
Have legal access to the spot, because if ALIVA sells it, that, that, that's not a reasonable.
I mean, it's awful when, when people do that.
Yeah. Good neighbor aspect does not apply.
No, and I think we understand the cautions for, for this building or us as a tenant being this.
Because I mean, when, when we look, when we look at this site, right, I can't, ALIVA, ALIVA.
Yeah. Exactly.
Right.
And, and it looks like it's an easy situation. Be allowed, and, and I think you're, you're already burdened on us to prove this out, which is a struggle and a lot of inspirations of intent to get away from the construction for the interior renovations that, that was once a massive installation. So I think you said that clearly, I understand your intent, I mean, are there any other questions you have to share? What you're asking us to do for this particular issue? I don't think so.
So, I, I have a comment, the reason that we're asking you to do it, and we're not saying that you have to do it yourself, you could go to the owner of the building that you have a contract with, and he could go to the owner of the other building. We don't care how it happens, but you're asking for a special consideration, and that's why we wouldn't do additional research for the consideration. It's on, it's on your part to come up with the correct parking spot.
Thanks, Jamie.
That, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to, I know we were talking about parking, which obviously is something we need to deal with. And I think working with the, our current landlords, and, because we have no relation to ALIVA at all, I understood. But they, they do, I mean, I think ALIVA built that building for the current owners, our owners. In that middle section there, I think it's, I just kind of cut it out, there's two rows of parking in there, and this is how it's been, I think, since nineteen eighty in the, you know, building, where, you know, and obviously we need to get this codified, right, this section, I think is what we're talking about, those seventeen spaces. But that gives that building fifty-seven spaces instead of the forty that I think is what we understood, you know? So, you know, doing the math that you guys did for that other building, I was like, at forty spaces, they're not conforming already as far as parking goes, but when you add in those fifty-seven, they, they have more than they were under current code, so I just wanted to point that out, that there is a bit of a difference.
So I, I did notice that there's forty over here.
Yep.
So basically, if we had some more information, and I did, I went on ALIVA's website.
Yeah.
They actually have a link, it's a broken link to a floor plan, so it's almost there.
Okay.
But we would need to see some kind of breakdown, so that if we're taking those seventeen away from there, if you could show that forty is sufficient, based on what forty is tenant's.
But it's, but, but the way it's always been, there's, there's, like, these seventeen have always been used by ALIVA and will continue to be used by ALIVA. These seventeen have always been used by the Downey property, and, you know, since nineteen eighty when Tony built it for Jen. You know, I mean, literally, that's how it went. I think the problem is, is that property line currently goes right through the bottom, right, two feet of those. And that's what we need to say.
Correct.
Hey, we have a, whatever, some term, ninety-nine years for a dollar, whatever, I don't know what the legal.
And if that was already in place, you know, I mean, if, if this situation had happened twenty years ago, and this was in place, and it, this building would have the legal access agreement, then we wouldn't really be having this conversation.
I mean, when, when we told our landlords that the property line cut on their side of their, they had no idea. They thought it does where there's forever, and so they don't need us.
Well, and that's just, that, that happens.
Yeah, yeah.
People just don't have a real reason to make a stink out of it and let it go apart there and.
They've been.
But at this point, I think.
They sold it.
They sold it, but at this point.
And then we, I'll be.
Yeah, and we can't act on it because it's non-compliant.
Yep.
That's, I mean, not that, we're not in support of the project, I think it's a great project, I think we're excited to see it move forward. We got a couple of things that we got to address before we can actually make those approvals.
Okay, I know, Bob's probably the guy I need to lean on for this, but timing wise, for if we go to the ZBA, you know, I'll say from my perspective, well, our perspective, we've been sitting on a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment for seven months of the business process, how can we just get this going, so I don't have to explain to my wife anymore why we can't send the kids to college next year?
So we have, we have a formal application in front of us, so I think you would need to make a full application to the ZBA.
Okay.
At this point, well, I think the first, first thing you have to do is get.
Yeah.
You have to get the parking agreement in place, because once you have the parking agreement in place, then we can ask ZBA for variance on six spots.
Okay.
If you take the, the variance request to the ZBA for twenty-three spots.
Yeah.
That's a big difference, right? So if you have the parking agreement in place first, then we're asking ZBA for six spots, and we're asking them for the, the relief on the signage to be inboard on that south side, I guess, or whatever, west side.
No, it's a good point, and we have rationales for those that have merit, so we can go forward.
So that, that I think is the first step, to get the parking address, so that we can move everything else forward.
So we know what you're applying for the variance for exactly.
Right. Okay, once that application is into the ZBA, our board can review the site package in front of us, make a recommendation to the board for their meeting. So it's, I think the first, like, the first thing we got to do is just get that parking address. Get the parking address, then we can move everything else forward pretty quickly.
Okay.
And Liam can give you the dates for the next meeting deadline.
Yeah, that's great, that's, that's what I'm thinking, yes, and Jamie, thank you.
Yeah, so the, uh, seminal deadline for the next ZBA meeting is, uh, June twenty-fourth, and that would put you on for the, uh, July fifteenth meeting.
So if we can get the parking figured out, so when's our next, the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Did you say the deadline was?
Well, the deadline's the twenty-fourth, when's the meeting?
Uh, July's fifty.
July, so if we can get the parking figured out before then, and you guys can put in your ZBA application, and then maybe we could put this on our agenda for the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
And discuss it then and make the recommendations to the ZBA, and then you'd be good to go.
So the ZBA is first, and, and on the twenty-fourth to get the application, is it right, the ZBA?
That's the first thing, is getting the application done, but first we need to figure out exactly what your parking variance.
No, I understand, so we want to.
Well, I, I, let me just say, as a suggestion, and this, this may seem crazy, but I would put together the application and get it in for the full amount of parking variance that might be required if the ALIVA parking can't be figured out in a permanent way, because they. Whole twenty-three, I'm not saying they're going to get it, but at least it gets, gets the application going, it can get published, and then if they come in and say, well, we need less, then it would not have to be republished.
I mean, optics on that one is a good one, too.
Yeah. Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
So, so clarification on the two reviews, one is the ZBA and the other with the planning board. We have the dates for both of those, can, you said the twenty-fourth and the fifteenth are the ZBA, is that correct?
Well, the twenty-fourth is the application with the ZBA.
Application, yeah.
This board, our next board meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
At that point, we will, you know, assuming all the parking stuff has been addressed, we can review the site package, and we can make a recommendation at that point to the ZBA. Their next ZBA's meeting was the fifteenth of July. So at that point, they would have this board's recommendation, if there's a positive.
Yeah.
Approval from the ZBA, our next meeting would be the twenty-fifth of July in there. We would have an opportunity in between to work on any site issues or anything that we need to do and prepare you guys for final approval on the twenty-fifth, but we can't.
July.
Correct.
There's no way we can speed this up to.
We can't do anything until we get ZBA approval, and ZBA approval would be the fifteenth. Our next available meeting after that is the twenty-fifth of July.
So the next ZBA meeting is the fifteenth?
Correct.
And we have to have the application by the twenty-fourth, right?
Correct.
And we can't get that in, our application in before the fifteenth to be on that meeting?
Uh, which, I think that's what you're saying, if we get our application in by the twenty-fourth, we will be on the fifteenth meeting.
On the fifteenth of July?
That's the next available ZBA meeting.
They meet once a month, because, yeah, we, we missed the deadline for this one. That's what you're going to say, right?
And, and the frustration on our side, as you well can understand, is not going until today that we have to go to the neighbor. I mean, we got the letter last week, or actually, last week.
Weeks ago.
Well, we got the letter about going to the adjacent building, but we didn't, we knew about this building, we didn't know about the neighboring building until last Friday, I believe, in general. So that's what's, the fact that we haven't heard from you clearly, and it's been almost a few years since we've worked with you for. It's frustrating, that's all I'm saying, so we've got your dates, and I think you've set the dates to be coordinated to your most efficient condition of going through ZBA's application, ZBA, you know, so you can make the recommendation, planning board, positive recommendation on the twenty-fifth meeting, if everything's been cleared by that date.
Yeah, ZBA comes back with the, a positive approval. And we can work with you between now and then to make sure the site package is already ready to go.
But it's hard, it's hard, it's hard for me to be in a, a still kind of tense situation there, waiting for another view and possible questions of what we've done through this.
We'll have, we'll have an opportunity in between, I think, there's a, this, this office can work with you to make sure that you have everything you need, there's a full checklist on the site that you need to make sure that you have all those materials, you need a full site plan. You know, the, the sketchout model that's there is not considered a full site plan.
Well, you said that also, that we have a full site plan originally in the package, it's in the package.
Yeah.
Sir, I, I think there's been communications and emails, and there were assumptions made that the letter of your parking agreement was sufficient. I think that more communication moving forward would be better as well, because we, we tried to notify you that your current submission wasn't sufficient, but I think your assumption, like, made it so you didn't have that communication with us. So that letter isn't a formal agreement, and so that makes your current application not complete. So that's the reason that it can't move forward.
And we're working through that.
Yeah, and, and again, we thought that was what was being asked from us exactly to get our building owner to show proof, uh, parking, proof that I have what you're pointing to.
Correct, and that's, and that's fine, I mean.
This is the first we're here to do that, right?
We've, we've asked for a legal parking here a few times.
So, I, I don't think, when he figures you're doing it, that's going to help.
Yeah, I agree.
At, at this point, we're, we're here to try and help as much as we can, get you through this, as much as we can. I know it's frustrating to get through in July, but we've got to go to ZBA, you know, for signs, for parking, get those addressed, and then this board will work, this office will work as diligent as legal, as you can.
Can, can I ask us, who's your, who's your number one contact we should communicate with?
Everything should go through.
I think, you know, Eric is fine, too.
Thank you.
I've been telling you, so.
Yeah, either one of us.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other issues that we can talk about?
Um, are there any other issues that we can talk about today that might come up in the future? That we can address now instead of picking these off one at a time?
I don't wanna make things off one at a time.
Um, parking's always been the big issue since the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, but like, I don't wanna get through the parking and then have another issue arise and, um, say the outdoor space or something else.
No, I think the outdoor space was, I mean, it wasn't excessive. I think it fits into that spot. You know, I think the, I'll speak broadly for the board, but I think the, the modifications that you're making to the building are to the betterment of the building. I think it's gonna be a great space. Um, you know, I think we just, we need to address these issues. I don't think there's anything else out there. I mean, the vast majority of what you're doing is internal to a building and not really something that we're gonna comment on your interior stylings or anything like that. We're worried about the outside of the building. I think it's, it's fine.
Off the top of my head, the dumpster enclosure was five feet tall. I think our code says six feet.
Okay.
Um, then just some more details on the lighting, just like cut sheets of the fixtures, they're gonna be hooked up.
Uh, it, it, it should be cut sheets, a photometric plan.
Yeah, a full lighting plan, yeah. Those are a lot more on that checklist that's in there.
Yep, that's right. And we thought that, that fixture we showed with the illumination was adequate, go, go further and get a factory cut that has photometrics in it. Can pull that off of their site.
And for your, your site, there should be a showing of the lighting levels at all spots on here.
You mean an engine, you mean a new engineered lighting plotting, photometrics? You know what, you gentlemen know, ladies and gentlemen, I just know what that requires. We thought
Lighting, yeah, lighting companies will do those for you.
If they're, there, no one here is putting in new parking lot lighting or anything like that.
I don't think we're talking about any poles or anything like that. You've got building mounted lighting.
This is the dent light, this is the deck only.
Right.
And they are, you know, grade level deck for ambient lighting. Well, we'll give you the guts, we've got it.
Building mounted lighting?
Pardon me?
Any building, I mean, you better have lights over
Yeah.
The, all the, uh, back doors, the egress doors, all the other, I mean, you've got building lighting that's on there.
Yeah.
I think the, the point that
I believe there is a lost track.
There is.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's lighting.
The building's illuminated all the way around.
Are they all, you know, current dark sky, LED lighting?
They're existing? I don't know. I think they're, I'll check. They're downlights, I think. They're not probably the latest in dark sky compliant, uh, existing building lights.
As long as they're downward facing.
Exactly. We're keeping the glow, which
But not on the side of the building.
None of the new lights we're putting in have any direct eye clutter into the lamp itself. It's all downlighting for the safety of the There's nothing else that's bad, it's just
Again, I just wanna be complete. I, is, does the board need any additional details on the deck?
What do you mean by details, Mark? Are you talking about construction details?
Well, if you, is what you see there sufficient? Is there more information on the deck? And they're showing some trees? Do you need a landscaping plan? Yeah, I, I, I just, again, they're asking to, for a full list of what is needed and I'm just pointing out issues that may arise as you further look at this. And if you need more detail to advise them of it now.
I mean, I think that, that, I just still point back to the, to the checklist that's on there. I mean, if you are doing exterior modifications to Mark's point, landscape plan is necessary. I don't have the checklist in front of me, I'd go through it point by point, but
There's a point in there that trees need to be three-inch caliper size.
Yeah. We can put that on the site, that's for sure.
Have you guys pulled the chart?
Much else as far as landscaping besides the trees?
Is there anyone, so like Kevin said, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars wrapped up into this for over a year now. And none of that investment is making money at this point. So what we want to do is try and go to this next meeting and have every box checked, which I think is, is, uh, absolutely, absolutely feasible. The biggest thing is getting a legal document from Oliva, I believe. Is there anyone we can check in with as we're going through this process to kind of review what we've put together? To get their blessing on it. So when we do come to the final meeting, we have a better chance of having everything passed. Like Eric, you have, you have your role in, in this.
Yep.
And that, so we would like to come to you for all the things that you need to know.
I would say I could help you out figuring out what's code, code compliant, but I have no, I'm not on the planning board.
I, I understand that you're not defining the issue that you're putting
Once, once you said that's your lighting plan, something we can forward, that's the engineers for them to review, you know, we're, we'll drive the process if you can decide this stuff.
Get that, we'll get your list from Eric.
Well, yes, you can. Reach out to me whenever. The only other date I'm gonna throw at you right now, July eleventh is gonna be your, your submission deadline. To be on the twenty-fifth planning board. So all materials need to be final and complete and done by the eleventh. Now, you're not in front of the ZBA until the fifteenth, but that application deadline, don't wait until after the ZBA to try and submit your materials, or you're gonna miss that deadline. The eleventh is the deadline to be on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so we got, in sequence, we have the, uh, the, uh, ZBA on the twenty-fourth of June. And then you're saying as you would, July with the application for the snows, the planning board, and then the fifteenth will be to be sold to the ZBA. And the auto meeting of the twenty-fifth of July for the planning board.
We have our dates.
Yep.
Correct.
But, it's, so just, I shouldn't, cause I don't If we come out of the ZBA meeting and we have to change something that's already been submitted, right, is that possible? Or is the ZBA just a thumbs up and thumbs down?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we're all open to address any questions you have. We'll try and hurry.
Yeah, no, and, and we'll work with you. I mean, if, if you have, and again, I, I encourage you to go through that checklist, make sure that you're hitting all the points that are there that, you know,
Can you, can you send us the exact checklist that would be, right? Cause we've been using checklists and we wanna make sure we're using the same ones.
Yep.
We've been going into your code, we've been pulling out everything we've read on all aspects of your questions.
And that's fine.
Good, thank you.
Yep. No, and we'll, I mean, at this point, we're trying to
Just so you know, Bob, that, that, you've been there, right? That, that code is pretty complicated.
Yeah, it is.
So, so I don't know if there's one
Yeah.
fully encompassing checklist. I mean, I think the best at this point is to
There's a second to you and Eric, right?
Well, I, yeah, there is, there is, uh, there's a couple of checklists I could definitely send you.
Well, there
But yes, it is, once you go through the weeds with the codes.
There's no question here, code. We know, I know more than these gentlemen who have their new business that they're trying to lift. And some deadlines, hard deadlines, as you know. I've known for years, uh, years. Long-term planning goals, initiatives, complexities, and, and this, and these must go together. We're in a stage now, uh, where we're trying to clarify that. And so your long-term intention, your long-term intention is to reduce parking, uh, asphalt variables. In the new world of parking planning relationships like you're doing at large development centers, to use former parking lots, coffee shops, that You know, the long-term goal is to reduce parking and asphalt, uh, and it's coming up here. Try to go along with that, which is the spirit of your code's future. As well as the detailed list, and that's why we're having some trouble getting somebody fix from a company to We're gonna hit it on the nose in these next meetings.
Great. Okay.
Got enough? I think so. Yeah, we'll, 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 uh, try to communicate with everybody. Questions come up, I think we'll just email and say, hey, you know, Eric misses it.
And, and another, just, and ask from my point of view, yeah, any questions with our applications, tell us that, please. So we can get it back, yeah, without another month or two.
Oh, of course.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Eric, can we get your application?
Yes, sir.
And Eric, you can also list everyone in this meeting, just like, I don't know.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Today I'll put out an email with Thank you.
Alright.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, man.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your reference.
Thank you.
Yeah. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Ken, Kent Alma, that's my uncle.
Good man.
I enjoy it a lot.
Nice to my show.
Nice to see you. Hi, guys. Sorry, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, we enjoyed it.
Did you ever, you go there?
No, never before this realm. I think we can end the whole session.